So this is the Auburn School Committee meeting, July 29th, 2020. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Do we have citizens' comments? It doesn't look like anybody is waiting in the wings. Do we have special recognitions?
Not today.
No, okay. Can I get approval of the minutes from July 22nd?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 22nd.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Dr. McQuillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
And myself, Mrs. Harrington, yes. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Handfield for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, welcome to see all of you and welcome to those of you who are listening out in the, in the community. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to my coach. As you're aware, I'm enrolled in the new superintendent's induction program, otherwise called NISIP. This program includes a number of workshops and coaching sessions. The Mass Association of School Superintendents. And joining us today as an observer, although he has his camera on, which is good, I'm glad he put his camera on, is my coach, Dr. John Brackett. Dr. Brackett holds a doctorate in education from Stanford University. And his impressive career includes time as a classroom teacher, and high school principal in California, and successful tenures as a superintendent in both Michigan and Massachusetts, where he retired from the Sudbury Public Schools. He now does consulting work in a variety of areas related to education and leadership. And I can't tell you how invaluable he's been in just these few weeks. So, Dr. Brackett, welcome to the meeting. I'm not sure if you want to say hello or just wave or... Are you muted?
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and I'm really looking forward to working with Casey and Auburn throughout the year. I'll be back to talk with you at a later time when it's not quite as crunched with the things that are on your plate. So, I just wanted to say hello and thanks for allowing Casey to be part of the program. I know when I went, when I started as a superintendent, I just wish there was a program like this.
That's great, well, welcome. We're happy to have you. And we are lucky to have Casey, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, go ahead, Case.
It's okay. So, under unfinished business, as I had mentioned to you last week, Class of 2020 is graduating this Friday, July 31st. I did send an invitation, a email invitation to all of you, so thank you for getting back to us on that. Attached also is the promised protocols that went to families after an exhaustive review with Darlene Coyle, who heads the Auburn Board of Health and Department of Inspection Services. The weather seems to be cooperating. It's going to be a little less cool and a little less humid. And we're very excited to be able to celebrate the Class of 2020 in a safe manner on Friday night. So, it'll be a bit of a, well, I shouldn't say a bit, it'll be quite a streamlined event. We are not having, just to kind of give people the details, we are not having a processional. Students will come to the site, the graduation site, which is Memorial Field at the high school, with their four family members. They will travel in packs from their vehicles to the fields. They will sit together in groups of five. And we will be, you know, calling them, you know, to the podium with staff around the square of where the graduates and their families will be sitting, with faculty members ensuring there's six feet of distance at all times. We also have faculty and staff that will be helping with traffic flow in and out of assigned gates and expediting exit when the ceremony is over. We are, you know, we're taking pretty much every precaution we can. We have hand sanitizers at every gate that will be asking people to utilize. We've asked people to bring their own hand sanitizer as well, if they feel the need to use that during the ceremony. We will have some student speakers on the stage. We will be wiping down microphones in between use of those. And we will have the National Anthem being sung. But it will be in accordance with, with DPH guidelines, which is 10 feet of distance laterally and 25 feet of distance before the front row of the, of the ceremony. So, the individual singing the National Anthem from our select choir, they'll be using wireless microphones that are one-time uses, and we won't be needing to sanitize those. So, so yeah, so that, those are the highlights of the plan. You can see the, the rest of the plan, you know, as I included in the packet. We're finalizing seating and whatnot right now. And so, we'll send out the site plans and exact seatings to families when they arrive. They'll have assigned seating by number, and they'll be seated in sections that will correspond to parking lots designated around the site. So, we can, you know, as I said, expedite entry and exit in a safe manner in accordance with the social distancing protocols. We will also have six-foot markers on the sidewalks should there be a, you know, a line at any one gate. But we are assigning approximately 60 families per gate to expedite exit and entry into the site. So, we feel we're in good shape and, you know, I know our families are excited, as are our graduates, to, to have this night for them. We won't be reading scholarships, just because in the interest of time, we're trying to limit our time on the field. However, I will acknowledge our generous, generous donors and direct people to, you know, review the listing of scholarships in, in the graduation programs. And then, that's really it. I'm streamlining my, my words to them. You know, I was thinking about, you know, this is my 15th one, my last one, and I was thinking, how do you, how do you kind of cut down, but yet make it, you know, a speech that's, that's appropriate for a graduation? There are four or five things that, that over the years, students and their families have always come back to me with, that they say, "I always remember this about your speech." And so, you know, I wish the kids well, and I've watched many of them grow up. My son is in this graduating class, so I've been with him for a long time. Offer them four or five lines of wisdom from Dr. Handfield, for whatever it's worth. And then move on to the conferral of diplomas. And then, from there, we will, we will then have an orderly exit off the site. So, we're anticipating no more than an hour, having not done this before. It could be plus or minus that. We are not, we are not practicing in order to limit, you know, interaction among kids. So, we're going to kind of build it as we fly it, but that's okay. I think, I think we'll be all right. We have pretty good directions in place, and it'll be a nice night for our kids. You know, they've had a lot taken from them, you know, because of COVID. So, looking forward to that.
Okay, great, sounds like a well-planned-out event. Lots of hand sanitizer should be flowing.
Lots of hand sanitizer will be flowing, yes. Yes, Mr. Fahey and I were discussing that at 7:30 this morning. So, we have, the batch is arriving tomorrow.
Oh, good.
We'll be all set.
Through the chair, I just have one question about, you know, the traditional photos afterwards. I know, you know, typically everyone's on the field, they take pictures with their teachers, et cetera. How are we handling that, or have they already had a chance to do that in a smaller setting?
Yeah, great, great question. So, so some of our kids, you know, just kind of when we gave them their, if you remember back in, in May, myself and, and I think probably 18 or 19 of our staff divvied up all the kids' senior graduation grab bags, and we went and we delivered them all to homes. In that bag was their cap and gown. So, a lot of kids have already done that. A lot of kids are already doing that up, up during, through this week, because they know that they, they can't really be on the site, you know, at all. You know, once, once we're over, everyone's got to, you know, leave the site. But, so yeah, so they've been doing that, you know, kind of on their own. And if you social around social media a little bit, you'll see the caps that are being decorated and the photos that the families are already taking, and it's really nice. As part of the ceremony itself, as, as the graduate comes across the stage, they'll acknowledge whomever is on the stage, you know, in a six-foot-of-distance way. There'll be no touching. They will then proceed to the end of the stage where their diploma will be on a table. There'll be a yearbook for them to get as well, and then they'll just take their masks off super quick. Kason Foster is going to take a headshot.
Okay.
Mask back on, and then they're back to their seats. So, there'll be at least some sort of formal photo, you know, if your families desire that, but any of the congregating that we would normally see in, in the fraternization, et cetera. We just can't have that, you know, unfortunately, under the guidelines.
Okay, no, thanks. I'm glad they're getting to do that in some form, and it's a big, a big deal, so.
Yeah, no, big deal, and it was a lot of planning, but, but well worth it. So, we're happy to be able to do it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Return to school update. As we had talked last week about return to school, this, this continues to be obviously a hot-button topic for, for good reason across the state. Last week, we brought to you a, a proposal to start the school year in a hybrid fashion, something we were calling the 2-1-2 model, which would have Cohort A in the building Monday, Tuesday. We would have a break on Wednesday for cleaning. Cohort B would be in on Thursday, Friday, and then we would have the weekends up for cleaning. This plan was something that we were developing based on guidance from the department, you know, from DESI in Malden. After we had our meeting late last week, as you, you know, as you may have, have heard on the news, you know, there was some interesting developments with the release of transportation guidance and the, the severe limiting of students riding school buses. There was also some activity between the commissioner and the MTA at the, at the state level around, you know, kind of demands that they would like to see for teachers within the state. In a follow-up conversation with the commissioner after those events, he softened his stance a little bit on, you know, what the exact expectations of DESI were. From June up until last week, the messaging was, you know, we're trying, you know, to put kids back into school full-time. And if we're not able to get them into school full-time, we want them back into school in a hybrid fashion as, as soon as possible. And we were kind of, I don't want to say we were limited in the models that we were using, but slightly limited in the models that we were using. And so, we brought the 2-1-2 model forward. With the softening of the stance from the commissioner's office and where he asserted, I think for the, maybe for the first time publicly, that in fact, you know, decisions on return to school by school districts or LEA decisions, you know, on Friday, I started to rethink the manner within which we would return to school. We're all concerned about the ability for us to phase into school safely. We are concerned not only about our teachers and our students, but we're concerned about our bus drivers, our custodians, our lunch staff, anyone who works in the Auburn Public Schools, transitioning back into this quote-unquote "new normal" in a way that makes sense. We are not returning, as we were discussing this morning as administrators, we are not returning to anything that's normal as it relates to what school was like on March 12th, when we last were in the building. So, I started rethinking, you know, perhaps, you know, a slight, a slight alteration to our restart schedule for, for hybrid instruction. And so, as was passed in the motion last week, you know, anytime that we would have an alteration to the school year, I would bring it back to the committee. Didn't necessarily think it was going to come this fast, but yet here we are. So, the, the consideration that we'd like to bring forward for the restart of the school year is to start in a, what we're calling a 1-2-1-1 model. School would start on approximately September 16th. That is the number of days we've calculated approximately, based on the 10 days of delayed school start that the commissioner eventually did work out with the MTA. And within that, that first week of school, which we're looking at September 21, we would bring our kids back in a 1-2-1-1 fashion. Essentially, we'd be bringing Cohort A in for half of a school day on a Monday. We'd be bringing Cohort B in on half of a school day on a Thursday. That following week, September the 28th, we would be bringing students back for a full day on Monday, that would be Cohort A, and Cohort B comes back for a full day on Thursday. And then, starting the week of October 5th, we would be looking to drive towards bringing our kids back in the 2-1-2 model that was, that was passed by the school committee last week. Obviously, you know, some of the issues that we're concerned about and that we want to address in this phased-in opening, again, as I mentioned at the outset, is, you know, just the, the, you know, the current concern for everyone's transition back in. During some of those half-days and, and full days in those first couple of weeks, we're doing trainings with our students about COVID, what it is. We're doing PPE trainings. We're discussing, you know, the why it's safe, you know, and why we need to be having, you know, safe hygiene practices and distancing and, you know, just being very mindful, you know, of the, of the, the new kind of operational rules of our school building. We also want to be able to take some time during that as well to get kids to get used to wearing their masks and have appropriate mask breaks. And we also make sure that we are doing, we also want to make sure that we are doing the appropriate social and emotional screenings of our kids as well. So, we kind of know what we're, what we're dealing with as we get ready to embark on, on, you know, a new academic year. And then we would be looking to do something around, you know, kind of academic benchmark testing to see where kids are, as they've really been out of school for three months, but obviously with the remote learning plan, it's six months. So, we would be looking to do something around the academic achievement of kids in that, you know, first or second week of October. Obviously, all of this is predicated upon, you know, what the, the national, state, and local, you know, health guidelines are as it relates to COVID. You know, there are slight upticks in COVID around, you know, you know, around us. And, you know, part of that obviously is attributable to, you know, just kind of reopening. But we want to just make sure that we're taking a very cautious and, and well-contemplated approach for everybody so that, you know, we can do this the right way. And so, I bring that back to you for, for consideration at this time.
Okay, thank you. I think what we will do is start with the motion and then have discussion after that. So, can I get a motion?
Jesse, I'm going to interrupt. I'm not ready to vote on a motion till I understand this a little bit better.
Well, can we at least start it and then discuss after the motion is opened, or?
I'll make them, I just have to find it to make it exact word.
It's not passing, we're just opening it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to open up to discussion. The Auburn Public Schools adopt and implement modification of Hybrid Option B. For 2-1-2 model, to half or full, will be decided by the superintendent. The academic model will remain in effect until such time the superintendent determines, based upon the available information, that is, that modification of this model is warranted, based on health data and recommendations from DESI, the CDC, and/or other organizations that would inform the decision.
Yep. Can I get a second?
Same.
Palms. Okay, so, we can open it up for discussion. Gail, would you like to start?
Sure. Casey, going back to September 16th, I don't understand what you mean with 1-2-1-1.
Sure, no, and I appreciate that, so I'm happy to clarify. So, so the state of Massachusetts, right, and the MTA, right, they agreed to a 10-day delay on the start, delay, excuse me, delay for the start of the school year. So, that puts us at approximately September 16th for the beginning of the school year.
Yep.
What we're doing is, we are, we are slowing down by two weeks. The implementation of the 2-1-2 model that we voted on last week, or that you voted on last week.
Yep.
So, all that we're doing here is, if, if the 2-1-2 model has Cohort A and B coming in two days a week, you know, successively, what we're, what we're seeking to do here is to, to drop that down to one day a week to start. So that, essentially, the 1-2-1-1 model is basically kids are remote. The 2 stands for A and B come in on Monday and come in on Thursday for a half-day the week of September the 21st. They come back for one full day the week of September 28th. And then, if everything is good with health data and whatnot, then we move to the 2-1-2 model that we talked about last week. So, it's just slowing down the, the physical entry of school for students, staff, and all of the school personnel.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but I still don't get it. The 1 is Cohort A coming in, is it a half a day or a whole day?
So, so September the 21st, on Monday, it would be Cohort A coming in for one half of a school day. Then it's remote Tuesday, Wednesday. On Thursday of that week, it's Cohort B coming in for half of a school day. Then the week of September 28th, instead of the kids coming in once for a half a day, they're coming in once for a full day. So, Cohort A comes in one full day on that Monday, and then Cohort B comes in for one full day on that Thursday. And then, provided everything is good with the health data and everything else, we're able to bring kids back. In the week of October 5th, we would be bringing students back in Cohort A comes in Monday and Tuesday for two full days in person. Cohort B comes back on Thursday, Friday, two full days in person, and we resume that 2-1-2 cycle until such time we have to go forward or back based on health data, that's all. So, it's, it's a, it's a phased, it's a kind of slower phased-in start to the school year.
Now, on the half-days, will the teachers try to get in, or will they schedule everybody in for a shorter period so they see all of them, or is that going to be broken up?
So, no, so it'll be, it'll be on the half-days, it'll be the, the same way we're breaking up the cohorts now, it's just that they'll have those kids just for a half a day to start, and a half a day to start on, in Cohort B. So, all the Cohort A kids that were coming in for hybrid, they will all come in for that half-day on that Monday. Cohort B comes in for all of that day on that Thursday for a half a day. And then, they come back for a full day the week of the 28th, and then they come back two full days each, starting October 5th. Again, it just, it slows, it, it just kind of eases the progression back into school so that we can, you know, do some, like I said, PPE training, allow them to get used to wearing masks, get used to kind of the, the operational aspects of the schools. And, and it gives others, i.e. bus companies, custodians, teachers, it gives everybody kind of just a chance to, to kind of slowly dip back into in-person schooling. Whereas before, we, we felt we were kind of having to go right off the bat with a 2-1-2 model because of what we were being told by, by the Department of Education. When that stance softened last week in their conversations with MTA, then from my standpoint, I felt it was better to just, to ease in rather than to have everybody show up first day of school, you know, and it's a full day, and there's all these things to get used to, and, you know, so that's why I, I felt like, you know, an incremental approach will serve everybody better.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that help?
So much.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, and Beth, you might be able to answer this for me. With younger children, talking pre-K, kindergarten, maybe even grade one, I know some districts are doing half-days with those kids because of, probably, I'm guessing, social, emotional, as well as the eating. There's a lot more support needed for kiddos at that age to eat, a lot more close proximity. Any thoughts on that? I know, you know, you taught in that age group for a while, so what are your thoughts?
Well, so, I, I think in the hybrid, so, no matter what, I think we have to remember that when we have the kids in school, we're going to have half the children we normally have, or about half, you know? And I do think that it's going to require some training and preparation for sure to help the kids understand how it's going to work, but I think they can do it, I really do. I think preschool's going to be a bit of a different animal, I think, because some of those kids are really babies. But what we, what we see with our kindergarten kids is they can, they get routines, and they can learn that. And I think the fact that we're really going to be managing half the students that we normally do, no matter what, I think it's going to make it even more manageable. But I will say that we did talk about today, to make sure that we have some meetings with families, both in large groups, but one-to-one with families too, before school starts, to kind of get a sense of maybe what a family is worried about for a particular student, right? Because we know they all have their particular needs. And so, we're hoping to maybe, and, and this has to be talked about with the union as well, but to maybe have some time to, during those 10 days, to be reaching out to families so that we have a really good understanding of our kids before they get there, and we also have the opportunity to share some of our expectations with them, right? So, I, I think it can be worked out, given the lower numbers that are going to be in the classrooms. I, I think, you know, it's going to take work. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect, but I think they can do it. Rosemary and I are meeting tomorrow related to preschool because...
I'm concerned about preschool full day, I have to say. Just, you know, having that young of children all day, I'm concerned there. I think the other kids could do it, yeah.
And honestly, I don't know that we can do full day, right? So, what we may be looking at is for anybody who wanted full day, maybe they're doing that 2-1-2 half-day, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that. So, we want to look at our counts, it's, it's interesting, we've had a number of folks who said they are not coming, and yet we continue to get calls from people who want to enroll. So, we really have to take a look at, and besides that, DESI really wants to make sure that we're providing good support to those students with special needs.
Absolutely, yeah.
And what's the best way to do that? So, we, that's going to be our next hurdle. We've kind of put it on the back burner, trying to get the K to 12 folks on board. But I, I don't know that we can have them in for full days. So, I, I think we're thinking along the same lines.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, through the chair, I have a couple of questions and comments. Have you finished, May?
I am, yes.
Okay, thanks. So, actually, we can stay on the younger children, just while we're, while we're there. I am wondering, I guess, what kind of feedback we've gotten already for the younger grades, so K through 2, and wearing a mask all day, given that DESI, the, the directive from DESI states that it is recommended but not mandated? So, have we gotten any feedback from, from parents on that? Because I think that, that is my biggest concern for the, in terms of the little kids being able to just sit all day in a mask, like in a, in a seat and not move around. So, have we gotten any feedback from parents of our little ones yet?
I, I think initially, I don't have the survey results up right now. We did ask that question about mask-wearing. But some of the things we do have in place, or plan to have in place is, when Dr. Handfield communicates with the community, is first of all, to encourage all of our kids and families to be practicing and wearing masks now. You know, it, it is our intent that they wear them, but at the younger ages, and I met with Mrs. Stanek and Mrs. Mahan at Bryn Mawr and Packer Chog regarding their schedules, they're building, building in, particularly at the start of the year, numerous opportunities for mask breaks. Now, that's a logistical thing, because they encourage that everybody's outside, you can't have everyone outside at once, that defeats the purpose. So, they are scheduling that in very frequently so that it's not, you know, one in the morning and one in the afternoon for our youngest children. It might be three in the morning. It might not be for a whole 15 minutes, maybe it's for 10 minutes, but they're working all of that out now because they fully recognize that. I, I think if we try and push them to wear them for extended periods of time, we're going to create additional problems down the road. So, the beginning of the year, as they're acclimating to that, it's going to be quite frequent that they're allowed to do that, so.
Thank you, that's encouraging to hear, because even, I've even gotten some feedback around parents holding their kids back a year from starting kindergarten because they just don't want to even deal with it. Whereas I think what we need to really try to do with whatever we do with our plan is to really get the parents' buy-in, you know, to understand that, you know, we're not, you know, we're not going to try to ask the impossible of your students. We do have a level of expectation that we would, we don't want everyone to come in with a reason why their kid shouldn't wear a mask because it's just difficult to do. I mean, even adults don't want to do it, let's be honest. But I'm glad they hear that we have them.
And I, I think, as much as the kids are going to need the break, I think the staff is too, because, like even me here at work, I'm in my office, but when I'm by myself, I don't wear a mask, so I'm at work, but I'm not wearing it all day. Folks that have been at home, I don't think are wearing them all day. So, even staff is going to have to build up that kind of stamina to do that. And we are encouraging that full-heartedly, that they, that they're allowed to do that. This transition is going to look like no other, and we have to accept that. You know what, we're not starting math on day two, right? There'll, there'll, there'll be some academics, but we have a lot of other things that have to get in place that are more important to start the year, like acclimating to that new, that new idea of wearing that mask during the day.
Okay, thank you. And then, my only other concern, so, I do support the motion, but what I would certainly ask, and I'm glad to see that it was in the motion, is that we reserve the right to revisit this. At any point that we think that we are seeing a lack of safety specifically around mealtimes, a lot of... A lot of, my own personal hesitation with doing a full day to start is really around meal times because even, you know, you know, office places aren't getting this right with adults that have been trained. So I certainly hasn't been around that. However, you know, it sounds like we're going with a plan. So I just want to reserve the right to come back and say, you know, if we're seeing other schools, either in other parts of the country or either in masks that haven't tried or that are a little bit ahead of us, I just want to really keep our ear to the ground for anything around that because I know that we can't make the risk zero, but I really want to drive that number down as far as we can. Again, and the point is not, you know, it's not to make it rigid, it's to get as many parents to feel comfortable with bringing their kids back.
So through the chair, if I may. So that's an excellent point. One of the things that, so what does the next, you know, month or so look like, right? So the next month or so, you know, we are, as part of our re-entry plan, so we'll be submitting a very brief, you know, four-hundred-word, you know, blurb from Auburn to the Department of Education that states this is what our full in-person, you know, possibility is, you know, and what our capacity to do that is at this point. Then we offer them, this is what we're doing for a hybrid plan. And then we have to then, you know, give them kind of a quick blurb on what our remote plan is. That's just like a little touchstone for them to look at. We then are required to submit a much more comprehensive reopening plan that is due August tenth. We were on a phone call with the commissioner starting at twelve-thirty, right before we jumped into this meeting. And that date hasn't changed. But it's kind of, think of it as a first read document, if you will. They want to kind of see what our outlines are. And we have opportunities to go through that document, you know, through August and review that. Within that document are going to be very, you know, tight protocols as it relates to what you're discussing right now. You know, food, you know, lunch protocols, you know, medical protocols, any protocol that's going to be part of the reopening of the schools is going to be in this document. So the committee and others as well, the return to school committee, will have an opportunity to revisit, you know, the initial guidelines and weigh in with concerns and any changes to language or procedure that we feel is necessary or that they feel is necessary. But also knowing too that we are developing our reopening plan in concert with very strict guidance and clear guidance and suggestion from the T.H. Chan School of Public Health at Harvard University, as well as Brigham and Women's Hospital and Ariad Labs. And they have worked this document up for all school districts in Massachusetts to use as they will with respect to creating a comprehensive reentering plan that, you know, goes from hygiene to remote learning to in-person learning to how do we screen people, you know, for potential illness? And it just, it goes on and on. So that's the guiding document that we're using that comes from very credible, you know, public health and medical professionals. So using that as a guide, your input as a committee, input of return to school team, input of our admins, union, so on and so forth, I feel like we'll have a pretty good plan to bring forward around that. But as you said, within this motion, at any point, you know, whether it's public health data goes up, you know, with increased COVID cases, or we're just not feeling like we should be starting in person at all, you know, without hesitation, you know, where we're meeting weekly, and we will be having that conversation.
Great, thank you. And I know in our last meeting, I actually asked about, you know, point of contact, rapid testing. I was really pleased to hear in Governor Baker's address on Monday, that he has actually already made a pitch at the federal level to get this for this. I truly believe that that would be a game changer across the board for everyone in Massachusetts in terms of their level of comfort with sending their kids back to school. So fingers crossed that we get that, but that would certainly even make me more comfortable with all the things we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I think too through the chair, I think too, you know, with the delay, you know, that we're going to experience, you know, to the reopening of school, you know, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at almost, you know, seven, eight weeks before we're receiving kids potentially in person. We will start on the sixteenth, but more than likely in discussion with the union. I think Beth and I, Dr. Chamberlain and I will meet with them tomorrow to finalize this information. But I think the thinking will be that we start remote sixteen, seventeen, eighteen for all our kids, and then we start receiving them. Cohort A comes in that half-day on that following Monday. Cohort B is in on that following Thursday. You know, and so a lot can happen between now and then, you know. So we keep our fingers crossed, like you said, that things continue to trend down here in the state and, you know, that there's some movement, you know, on a rapid testing situation for everyone, so. Points well taken.
Well, thank you, that's, those are all the questions I had for now.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I think last meeting, Meg and Doty brought up the phased approach, which I feel like this definitely addresses and is a great plan. I agree with you, Dot, there are some kinks that could be worked out, but I think we have sixty days to, you know, work those out. So this is really just, maybe just like a first reading. And it's certainly a motion that will evolve. I think it's a work in progress. But we got to get the air balloon off the ground, if you will. So this is like baby steps. But Gail, did you have any more concerns or questions?
I was mostly confused by the two.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, that was what was throwing me for a loop.
Apologize.
What two was happening?
I apologize, you know, as I was sitting here thinking, as we were having this conversation, how can I, this is the ultimate teacher issue, right? How can I explain this so you understand?
There you go.
Essentially, it's the two-one-two model that we talked about last week. But just think of it in these terms, we're subtracting a day from each of the twos. So the kids are only coming in one day and one day for the first two weeks. In the first week, it's a half-day on each one day, then one full day, one full day, then into the two-one-two if, you know, if everything is, you know, fingers crossed going well. So maybe that was probably maybe a better way to explain it.
Okay, I got it.
No, I apologize, you know, I apologize.
Just in terms of when parents might find out, any idea timeline-wise when parents could find out what day their kids, I'm just trying to think of that for parents.
So through the chair, we, what I anticipate, and it may not happen, but it will happen more than likely this weekend, I will communicate with our families what our reopening plan is and let them know that next steps will become. They will hear from their students building principals directly. The building principals will be sending out new survey information, looking for if their child is looking for hybrid, remote, and if they're going to take the bus. And then from that point forward, once we get that data back and we know what we have, you know, for people coming in, then we will look at teasing out, you know, the days and things like that. So Dr. Chamberlain, I don't know if you want to, if you had any further thought?
The only other thing is we are currently working on, we finally got a list, we got a list of all our students that are siblings, right? Because that's the other piece, is that dividing line. That was shared with principals this morning for them to take a look at. So we can begin to say, okay, this looks like a good dividing point, right, for the two groups. And I think that then that's going to help with that assignment process, so. That's well in the works. So hopefully, once the model rolls out, we won't be too far away from letting kids know when they're coming.
And then through the chair too, just to continue that conversation. So once that information's out, then every child's building principal is going to be hosting probably one or two town hall meetings to go through, you know, what our re-entry plan is, you know, given, I mean, assuming that school committee, you know, reviews and approves it. So we'll have a couple of town hall meetings where principals are able to address specific questions by building. And, you know, in conversation with Dr. Chamberlain this morning, we anticipate that could be one or two, you know, maybe three if it was necessary in a particular building. And then we would start thinking about orientation, orientations. How are we getting our kids and families acclimated to their teachers or to their new school buildings? And so we will be talking to the union tomorrow about working out some sort of a system where, you know, our teachers are reaching out to children and families prior to the beginning of school on the sixteenth. So we're really trying to, as best we can, we're really trying to just ease everybody back into this, you know, starting in August, once we get the return to school plan in place, to then go town meetings and then go into orientation meetings by school. And then the, you know, start of school the sixteenth or so.
And just add in there, as well as training for families and for students on the learning platforms?
Yes.
So that they have that information before school starts.
Question.
Bless you.
The town hall meetings, is that going to be online? Or are you, you're not in person?
No, 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 so there'll be, there'll be, there'll be like the Zoom format here. And, you know, Dr. Chamberlain and myself will, more than likely, will probably split the schools. We haven't talked about this yet, Dr. Chamberlain, but I'm presuming.
Okay.
Okay, I'm presuming that we would split the schools and so that, you know, we would be in attendance at, you know, one of us would be in attendance, you know, at least in one building with the principal of principals, you know, to help offer a district perspective, you know, if that's needed. But to really let our administrators in the buildings really own the plan and start to work it with their families, again, to make them feel comfortable, you know, in their return. The other part too, and I know, you know, there's also some, you know, people are still kind of on the fence. Do I come, do I stay, what do I do? You know, remote learning, we are obligated to provide a remote learning option to all of our students who elect that. And so while some students may say right now at the outset, well, I prefer hybrid or I prefer remote, there may be some changing, you know, or desire to change as they go through this process. We don't have a choice, and I'm not saying that we would prohibit this anyway, but the state's very clear that, you know, it's, you know, constitutional rights of our kids, that they can choose either one at any time. It's upon us as a school system to figure out, you know, how to accommodate kids. So, you know, if someone says, yeah, I'm all in hybrid, and then they decide like September twelfth, like eh, no, I'm not. I think maybe I'm not going to do that. You know, we are obligated and we would do that anyway. It's the right thing to do to accommodate, you know, a switch like that. So I know that's also something that's out there as well.
I have another question now.
Sure.
If a family elects remote learning for their child, who's going to provide it? The class teacher they would have been in or someone else or?
Dr. Chamberlain, would you like to take that or?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
So some important information to inform that is we have to get the surveys out. First, to see what students and how many students we're talking about that want to learn in that environment. And second, what staff feels though they need to teach in that environment. So we have those surveys ready to go, so we're going to figure that out.
Okay.
Who hope is that, you know, it might work out beautifully, that we have a set of teachers who, for, you know, health reasons or whatever, need to stay remote, and we're going to be able to marry that with the students who feel the same. But that's going to take some planning and we just need a lot more information about that as to the specifics with how it'll work out. But we are currently looking at some learning platforms that can be used in that virtual space to kind of facilitate some of that and to give that remote teacher some tools to make that remote learning environment more powerful. So we're looking at that too.
Excellent, that sounds good.
All right, anybody else have any question? Meg, you all set?
Yeah, so, and the nurses are on board with this, right, within the district?
Yes.
This plan?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, no, I have no questions.
Yeah, no, through the chairs. So, yeah, I mean, this, you know, this, you know, this actually, you know, it gives, like I said, it gives everybody kind of an easier transition to start the school year. So, you know, if I'm looking through the lens of a school nurse, for example, knowing that I'm coming in and seeing, you know, my first cohort of kids for half a day, and then my first cohort of kids in cohort B for half a day, you know, one day a week and then a full day, it's going to allow them hopefully to start to kind of get a feel for, all right, you know, what does this look like in the schools? And it actually is a much better, it's a much better approach, I think, than just everybody showing up, you know, Monday is all cohort A kids and, you know, and then we're expecting kids the next day. If something has to be tweaked or changed or rethought, we can receive kids and then we have a couple of days to think about it through the first two weeks of school. It also gives our custodians an opportunity to really, really kind of, you know, evaluate their ability to, you know, to clean rooms and work out their routines. Same thing for lunch, you know, lunch lady, the lunch staff and, you know, and our teachers and whatnot. So, yes, they're on with it.
Great, thank you.
I think it's also worth noting that the leadership team, they've worked so hard on this and things change and evolve every single day. And I truly believe in all of you and you guys want what's best for the kids. I think it comes down to our teachers and leadership want to see the kids as much as possible. They have so many fears themselves about what's gone on, you know, over the past six months. So, I don't know, I definitely think, you know, we're we're going to keep working at it along the way, but this is a really good start personally, I feel that way, so.
It's a new school year, so these kids need to know who their teacher is.
Totally.
A lot easier in March for me to get my kids to do remote learning when I could tell them I was going to tell their teacher and they knew who their teacher was. I think that's really important to get them to establish these relationships as much as possible.
I agree, Meg, totally, one hundred percent.
One more question.
Sorry, Gail.
I'm sorry, Jesse.
No, go ahead.
Are they thinking of allowing the children to use the cafeterias or are they going to be eating in the classrooms? Has that been?
Yeah, so through the chair, so that's a great question, Gail. So that's one of the, that's probably, I mean, there are many, many challenging issues to this reopen, but I have to say that this lunch, the lunch issue is probably the one that that may cost us the most angst and anxiety and thought, you know, around what we're doing here. Because, you know, the other thing that I had brought up, or actually, Dr. Chamberlain and I, Dr. Chamberlain brought it up to me rather in a conversation today was, you know, we don't, it's not just lunch, you know, kids like at the elementary, they have snack time. You know, the older kids, you know, might grab a granola bar mid-morning or whatever. And so how are we going to kind of navigate, you know, kind of the complexities of that, you know, in addition to the lunch setting? And so, you know, every building in terms of cafeteria space and its size and things like that all offer their own challenges. And so those are some of the things over the next, you know, couple of weeks we're really going to dig into. Now that we kind of have an academic model, I believe, you know, ready to go to families, now it really becomes kind of building in all of these, you know, other details that are so important to the child's school there.
Through the chair, can you add please water bottle usage to your assessment of snack time and lunch time?
Sure. In terms of sharing, non-share?
No, no, I just mean a lot of, usually, I mean, usually kids have them with them all day and they just have them on their desk and they're able to do whatever they need, you know, they drink all day long. And I think that, you know, for some kids, might not be a big deal, but some really might affect them, so.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, those are all those, those are right, those are all, those kind of, you know, these details that as we continue to flesh this out, you know, what a school return looks like, you know, that's a really, that's a legitimate issue that just came up, you know. Another legitimate issue that Joe and I stumbled upon this morning, just totally haphazardly, he and I were talking about physical plant concerns as it relates to our emergency plans, you know, because we have to have certified emergency plans through APD and the AFD. And there's a state requirement on how you store hand sanitizer and where you put hand sanitizer and things like that. So, you know, they're just, the more we walk forward, the more we walk into like that. I wasn't expecting when I got out of bed this morning to think about where are we storing, you know, ten tons of hand sanitizer. But now you got to figure it out because otherwise you're violating a code, you know. So it's just, it's just one of these, it's just one thing after another, after another, after another, so. But yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I didn't even think about that, you know, kids and water bottles in classrooms hadn't even crossed my mind yet.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, now it is.
Doty, thinking of that, if they could have their water bottle at the desk all day, then they wouldn't have to wear a mask because they could say they're always drinking.
Oh, exactly, exactly. I mean, and you joke, Gail. Oh, exactly, exactly. I mean, and you joke, Gail, I mean, like, and you, you say that in jest, but I've already started to get some questions about like, well, so and so doesn't like stuff to touch their ears. Can they get an exception to not wear the mask? I mean, that's already coming in first. I'm not the person that, that designs that, but second, you know, I think we're going to have to kind of recalibrate what we think is an inconvenience between your, or a necessity versus what's just an inconvenience you can't just have to deal with.
You know, and through the chair to that point, um, you know, in addition to the reopening, this information being in the reopening plan, it's, we're also going to have to bring amendments to our school, um, our school handbooks back to you as well.
Right.
All of that information is going to need to be wrapped into that, into that too. So, um, but no, that, that's another great point that, uh, you know, that we will, we will be traversing. I mean, the reality of it is unless there's a medical documented issue, we, we, there's really no flexibility. The only, the only continued dialogue around this is will be PK to one.
Right.
But even on school buses, if you're PK to one, they're saying you have to wear it on the school bus, but the guidance then changes when you walk into a school building. Um, you know, so it's, yeah, so we just, we're going to continue to ferret these things outward. But it's just, it's one after another, after another, after another, so.
And Jesse, I, uh, through the chair, one thing, we just, uh, just to, you know, reiterate what Jesse said. I know that you have lots of us coming at you, Casey and Beth, with questions and concerns in addition to all the parents. We really, really appreciate all of the hours and hours of thought and effort and emotion that have gone into this. So I hope that in all of the dissection that has taken place through all the doc-, all of the documents, maybe that our appreciation is not lost because, like you said, it's like layers of an onion and everyone is kind of in uncharted waters that we're working through together. So, but please accept our thanks for putting this together.
Absolutely. No, you're welcome and, and, you know, we're happy to do it. Um, you know, like, uh, as I was listening to the commissioner this morning, he was talking about this being, you know, unequivocally the most difficult, you know, time that any of us are going to face in education. Um, you know, and, and that's just the nature of the beast right now, you know? And so we'll get through it, but yeah, it's just kind of just getting through these things and have to make course corrections as they come up, so.
I agree. Yeah, that, that was great, Dot. Seriously, I mean, I think it's our leadership team and our, you know, our teachers and staff, they are number one and, um, they are thinking of all of these issues as well and taking them with a grain of salt. And I think we as a committee just need to kind of trust the system a little bit and go with it. And, uh, you know, just remember it is evolving and there's plenty of time to make adjustments and, you know, speak up and, um, course correct or whatever it may be. I don't know. But I, I think we need to, we need to trust this, you know, the leadership and, uh, and keep moving forward as much as possible, so. Um, all right, if there are no more questions or concerns, I'm going to take it to a vote. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. All right, um, could I get a, I'm, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
And, uh, Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
And myself, Mrs. Harrington, yes. Let's vote.
Great, thank you.
Um, now on to new business.
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Chair. Uh, just under new business, um, kind of move off of COVID for a little while and talk about something educational. Uh, obviously, you know, with, with, towards the end of the school year, in addition to the COVID-related issue that we were dealing with, um, we obviously had, um, a, a rise in social justice activity across the country with the death of George Floyd. Um, and during my final days as principal of Auburn High School, um, there was an outpouring of desire to talk about social justice issues, um, within the context of Auburn High School, but also within the context of, of the Auburn Public Schools in general. Um, so for those that directly outreach to me, um, alumni, uh, current students, parents and others that, that I had come into contact with when I, I went to kind of observe, um, a couple of the protests that, that happened here in Auburn, um, I offered to put together, um, a, a meeting of everyone interested to just talk about the whole, the issue of social justice in a very open and general way. Um, and to talk about their experiences, you know, in Auburn, um, in their lives, whatever they wanted to share. Um, and then to extend that conversation, um, to talk about what, if anything, and I, I believe there's a lot to do, but what, if anything, you know, after those early conversations, um, might be next steps for, for the Auburn Public Schools to, um, you know, to take as it relates to evaluating, you know, our, um, curriculum and our, um, programming for students and staff, um, around not just issues of social justice, but multicultural issues and, and other issues that will be related. Um, we haven't done that in, and we've done it in spots, but in my 15 years here, we haven't like had a wholesale just kind of review of, you know, what's best practice, um, in, in having the conversation. So, um, on August 6th, uh, starting at 1:00, there's a, a approximately 30 parents, uh, teachers, alumni and faculty, student staff that are going to be having this conversation. Um, and then from there, uh, you know, getting their feedback on, on kind of what they think some next steps should be. And then we will be discussing this obviously, you know, with you and with building administrators and, and kind of starting to formulate a PK to 12, um, you know, kind of, you know, committee or team or whatever, however we want to phrase it, um, it's, it's, it's still yet to be determined. But to, you know, kind of take a look at, you know, what is the role of the Auburn Public Schools, you know, with respect to, to social justice? Um, you know, what should the programming be, you know, for our students and teachers? What things are already in place? Uh, what things do we need to, to refine? Um, what things do we need to add? Um, so Dr. Chamberlain and I are excited to, to begin that work. Um, and as I say in the, uh, in my, my memo to you, um, all of you are welcome to join in if you just want to listen on that conversation next week. Um, I'm happy to send you the Zoom link to, to it. Um, I'm excited to, to open the conversation and, and, and get this rolling. It's, it's, um, it's important. And, um, we need to make sure that we're covering, you know, covering this for, for our community, but, but for our families and staffs that are most, most impacted by this right now. So that's just information.
Through the chair, if you, please could send the link, that would be great.
Okay, happy to do that. I'll send it to all of you. If you want to drop in, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right.
Um, yeah, and knowledge is power and I think that's, uh, where, where we're at with this. I think it's definitely something that should be talked about, can be talked about and, um, you know, a learning experience for all. So I think it's a good idea. I will tune in for that.
Great, thank you. Look forward to having your, your support and your, your comments and, and everything else because certainly we'll be partners with you in that as well. So thank you.
Okay, uh, next is the teaching and learning report. Uh, Dr. Chamberlain?
Hey, everyone. Thank you very much. Um, so first just wanting to give you an update on the ESY summer school. So as you know, we welcomed back eight students for in-person support for a half-day, four days each week. Um, it has gone tremendously well. Um, staff has been, they've all been thrilled to be back with kids. Um, and likewise, it seems the kids are accordingly happy to be back with them. Um, throughout that program, they're also making daily connections with those who are still learning remotely, um, but who are their peers, um, that they would be learning with. And that's also been very well received. We had a lovely email from one of our, uh, parents this morning just about how thrilled she's been with the whole experience. Um, and in addition to that, as you can imagine, when we closed in March, there were many of our students who were in the process of being, um, going through the testing process for special education. And that all kind of came to a sweeping halt, uh, given the closure. Uh, this week we started, um, we started scheduling some of those children to come in. Again, it's being done at the middle school, um, with some of our school psychologists and team chair staff to begin the testing process so that we get a bit of a jump on it because we're going to have a backlog when school resumes and this will help to mitigate some of that. Um, the initial recording from, uh, the people doing the testing, there was some hesitation on their part at first. They were a little worried, even though we have all the PPE, we have screens, there are protocols for greeting the student, for drop-off and all of that. Um, and in short time, they have said it has just gone beautifully. They've been so happy to be able to get started again. They're happy to be back kind of in some point, kind of a groove. So, um, Mrs. Reedy's done a tremendous job with building that. So we're very, very pleased and it certainly has given us a little bit of a taste of what it's like to have kids in school. So it's gone very, very well.
Absolutely.
Um, to share with you that Mr. Boobia, Mrs. Worsbicky and I did come together to put in, um, with Dr. Handfield's guidance, um, a te- competitive technology grant, um, through the Center for Strategic Initiatives. This came out through DESI. This is where we applied for funding for hotspots. So we, in collaboration with the principals, we have just the general idea of what we might need. Um, and so we did put in for 50 hotspots to the tune of $21,494. That includes the monthly subscription fee that you pay for the hotspot. Um, and we, uh, the commissioner noted today that we may know sometime next week if we receive that money. So that would be a great addition to programming, um, that we're able to offer to families, so. And finally, oh, we've also applied for, well, it's a, it's a designation of funding from DESI through the Coronavirus Relief Fund that we may be eligible for up to 220, they're basing it, the value on $225 per student. The leadership team with, uh, Mrs. Worsbicky's leadership, um, we've been compiling a list of needs. Um, the needs can range, it's not, it certainly can cover things like PPE, uh, but it can also cover technology needs, um, professional development time, uh, if we need additional staffing for things i- i- in, in the initial phases. It can't fund positions per se, um, but if we needed something additionally directly related to COVID, it can fund that. So we're looking at a wide range of things from laptops for, to make sure every teacher has a good laptop so that if we go remote, they have a camera, they have a good tool to use for that. Um, I'm going to be providing some, uh, books for everyone on how to create effective videos in the remote learning environment that comes highly recommended. Uh, we've upped our professional development line so that teachers can have paid time for planning as well as professional development. Um, a wide range of, of things that are being put in there. Things related to, uh, teletherapy or, um, SLPs, excuse me, um. Sorry, that was next door. So a wide range of things that, uh, will be, will be looking for. The grant is due, uh, August 31st and the funding, uh, expires at the end of December. So it's all for things that we need to get and have prior to that. But it's a great opportunity to really fill in our technology gaps primarily along with some other things. So, um, it's going to be great.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. That's great. I do have a question, uh, about the summer school. Are the kids eating lunch there?
No, no, it's a half-day.
Okay.
It's a half-day. We do, they do have a snack in the morning. Um, and certainly it's a very small number of students and staff and so they just really, it's spacing, right? Making sure that everybody's spaced appropriately. Um, when they take breaks, they're taking breaks outside individually, so they're not in a, remembering these are our students with some, um, pretty significant needs. They have all individual materials that they use, whether in the classroom or when they go outside for a break. Um, so they are doing that and it's the spacing that they provide for the kids when they're having the snack. So, and it's gone very well.
Great.
So through the chair, actually, on that, can I just ask one other question? Is Dr. Reedy looking at, and, and Billy, Casey as well, are you guys considering any additional type of orientation for, um, some of our children in the special needs program that might need a little bit of additional lead time to get used to the new landscape? I don't know if that's been considered and yet, and we're kind of early in the process, but just as you're mentioning what we've done to get our, the ones in building used to what we're doing, so.
Yeah, so through DESI, we are really encouraged to have any students that have, um, extraordinary needs, high-needs children, in more frequently. So we're trying to work out a schedule when we return to school. Some of these students may eventually come to school every day.
Okay.
Um, and, and we're trying to work that out because, um, they are, um, certainly at a higher risk for significant regression in their learning.
Right.
And so along with oftentimes additional services that they need, whether it be speech or occupational therapy or physical therapy. So we are looking to create a separate schedule for them. So we may have some kids that come to our building every day. Now again, it's going to be a phased-in approach.
Sure.
That reflects what, what Dr. Handfield talked about, but we are definitely looking at that because they, they truly need it. And we may include in that group as time goes on, some of our EL students that are at, you know, are ones and twos who really, you know, their, their language is just developing.
Right.
Because in the same way, they are at a higher risk of greater regression than most students. So yes, we are looking at that.
Sure, great. Cause it just makes sense that especially while the buildings are more empty, in particular for many, some of our kids with behavioral issues, that might be a good time to let them kind of have free roam, get comfortable. So I'm glad that you're there. That's part of the plan. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that the beauty of our plan is our kids are already six feet apart. So when they are eating or anything.
Right.
They're, they're separated and, um, I think that's going to make things a heck of a lot easier when we get more kids in the building.
I agree with that, Meg. That was a, that was a smart move from the start, I think, on, on everyone's part here.
Yeah, totally. I agree. That was, cause if we were dealing with three feet apart right now, I just feel like we'd be backpedaling constantly trying to answer, you know, questions and solve even more problems. So, um, yeah, good call, Meg, from the very start in the return to school club. So, yeah. You put the nail in the coffin on that one.
Too many CDC documents. I apologize.
I'm sorry, Beth. One more question. Um, the hotspots, are those like designated for people's homes? Or what were you thinking with that?
Yeah, so they would be, so we need to do some more investigation around who are our families? And we have a good idea that really struggle with internet service. Um, because if we're going to address the issue of equity and making sure that everybody receives what they need, this is certainly one of them. Um, so kids that we found during the, the closure that didn't respond, like didn't often participate, um, who, you know, in phone calls said, we have a hard time with the internet and we tried to navigate that in the closure. We now know who some of those families are and that's what it'll be. They will get this hotspot for their home um, so that the child can have, uh, appropriate access when it's needed. Uh, because even if we go to that 212, it's going to be three days a week that.
Right.
Home learning. So they're going to need a reliable source for that.
That is amazing. That makes my heart happy, um, that the district would cover those costs and, you know, to get everyone on the same playing field and, uh, equal opportunities. So wow, that is great and, um, I hope that happens definitely. So. All right. Any more comments or questions from the committee? All right, uh, Mrs. Worsbicky, you're up with your, uh, business and financial report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I provided in your packet a year-to-date budget, um, dated July 23rd, 2020. And I'd be happy to answer any questions with regard to that. Seeing none, I guess, no. I'll move on to, I've also provided a, a small listing of transfers. There's actually just three, um, different transfers on that sheet between series, um, that just to kind of clean things up in the budget for 2021, that I'm looking for your approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions as well on that.
Okay, could I get a motion?
Make a motion. The budget transfers as presented, provided by the business manager?
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor? Dr. McCrillis?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
And Mrs. Harrington, myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and do we need executive session?
Uh, yes, we do, Madam Chair. Just, um, yeah, a quick one, please.
Okay, um, all right. So I, could I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with regard to litigation.
Okay, and, uh, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
And myself, yes.